Hey. Ed, while I got you, this was that approval from.
May.
May, that's right.
I had the lead.
I'll leave and you signed off on that decision.
Yes.
Would you mind just signing above where I just typed in your name and then just states that? That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. We get started? If you can hear us, right?
Oh.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good evening, everyone. I will call the meeting to order. First. Item is additions and deletions, and I believe we have an addition if you arrive at the address.
Right, 175 East Miller, it doesn't need to be, so just as a clarifier. When, if things get added to the agenda, I'm taking this as a, from the town board that, or when Joel will be putting on the agenda. If things coming kind of late, they just get put under the addition to the agenda as a acknowledgement that it came in a little late. They get bumped all the way to the end of the agenda, though, so it's not like these, this needs to be reviewed right now. So we can talk about it after there are two cases.
Yep. All right. Um, so any other additions or deletions? Okay. Privilege of the floor, if anyone would like to speak. We have a public hearing on Valley View Road, so you can speak specifically to that project when we get to it. Otherwise, if anyone has any general comment. Rhonda.
Well, I think I commented privately that I would like to see. People submitting plans that are. Close to scale as possible, and that, as I said in my note, that. It doesn't really need to have been done by an architect or anything like that. But if you're going to be drawing buildings on a lot, I, I would like to see the buildings. Be, be fairly much to scale in relation to each other and also to the land itself. And so. You know, that's, that's my main issue there. I have an issue about this. Nelson property. And I'll, I'll voice it here because it's just a general comment. This Nelson property. Was dealt with when David was. The planner, so it's more than a year old. And I would have liked to have seen. A link to the previous minutes of this. This property because I would have wanted to go back and. Look at the minutes. I remember what I said when I was there. I remember what Mr. Berger said when he was there. I don't remember what David. I remember that David allowed him. Mr. Nelson to put up a garage. Before he puts up the house, but I don't remember whether or not David asked for a size of the garage. Or specified a size, because what we have now is something pretty enormous. And I mean, it's more than. Four cars in size, so. But, and is huge. So I, in the future, I would like, if we go back to something that has. Started a year or so prior, I'd like to have a link to the previous minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Why?
No. Uh, Joel, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wondered whether you had the lights on or you're sitting in the dark.
We have the lights on now, it's just that time of day.
Yeah.
We're usually in the dark, though, so.
Ed.
Hi. To speak a little further to what Rhonda referred to, I don't remember, I don't, it was, it was quite a while ago. I don't know how many of the current members of the planning board were. Members at that time, I think at least three that I can see. There was considerable discussion about the Nelson property on, on East Miller. There was a court case involved. I. I'm pretty sure, Rhonda and the rest of you, that the garage has not changed size since then. It was noted how large it was back then. I think it would be important to be able to review the exact. Discussion about that and why permission was granted and under what conditions. My memory, which may not be as good as yours, or may not necessarily even agree with what the printed record is, if there is one. Was that. There was quite a bit of discussion, if not an insistence. That the space between the property line and the building, the building should be treated as a front yard. In order to protect the existing property owner. What this current change does is, I don't think it goes within the limits of what a front yard setback might be, except for the driveway. But it does tighten the tolerances. I think it'd be the, the previous owner of the front property, I believe he sold and left, he was so upset with the result. I don't know that he was right, but let's just say strong feelings were involved. And you should be, review this very carefully to make sure that the original intent and promises. Are not being violated by this change. You might approve it because you feel they aren't, but if they are, it should be a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Anyone else for a general comment? I know those words specifically about the proposal, but can you come up here because people can't hear you, but. We will have a.
So there's no, no change in the size of the garage, it's just the movement of the pro, the actual house that was approved. Originally in 2021 and then approved again in. April of 2021, it's in the meeting notes from 21. I had attended four planning board meetings, four months in a row. There was a lawsuit against the town, myself and the former owner. We won both lawsuits and we settled. And Mr. Berger or anyone is not allowed. By court order to oppose the changes in his favor. So if that happens. It could be reopened because we had a settlement. And it could be reopened in my favor because he owed. Fees, court fees or fees, and we settled that out of court to where he would never oppose. The building of the property again. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments for privilege of? No, okay. We will move to approval of minutes from June. And anybody, everybody read them because I just read them. Anyone want to make a motion for approval of the minute? Jody.
Oh, I wonder where you were.
Lucky. I'll second.
Berman?
Yes.
Helen? I'm staying with you. Uh, David?
Yes.
Breder?
Yes.
Nucci?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
All right, Leslie, are you here for town board?
Just a quick news. Town Board started. Pro, a process that will hopefully lead to demolition of the house to the south of town hall. It's a first. Attempt at a renewal to deal with derelict properties in town. The town board passed a resolution. Identifying it as a public hazard based on the code enforcement inspection and order demolition, so we'll see. We'll see what happens with that. Another thing was a committee will be meeting with TG Miller to discuss possible details and costs of. Of the crosswalk and ADA compliant changes to town hall entrance. That hopefully is getting going. And it's probably part of Greg's report, but a certain substitute planner. Will be working with the town while Greg gets to play with a new baby. And his name is John Zemansky and he's sitting back here. He's worked with us in the past, so I'll be nice to him.
Leslie? When, when are you going to be looking at the ADA compliance?
I'm not sure when they were, the, there's a small group that's going to meet with TG Miller to talk about costs and, and actually. Trying to maybe tie in the crosswalk with. The new entrance to the town hall.
You let me know when that is?
Yeah.
You want to be a part of that?
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah.
We're, we're taking out the kids.
I think. Joel, did you hear that?
Joel, would you want Jody Scraber to join in?
Yeah, do you want her on the committee?
No, it's not my, it's not my call, the board appointed the committee, but we could, but I'm, I'm.
Bring it up.
Probably all know personally in favor of involving anybody who wants to be. I would, I would welcome Jody's involvement. The, the group I already met, by the way, once, enough to get, enough to get a. The TG Miller to give us a, a, a rough idea how much time and how much money it would cost to, to explore the options. And that should be coming back to the board, probably in the 21st. Like 21st August 4th.
Yeah, so that's the next, I can, it's the very least keep you in, in the loop, but if you wanted to, we're gonna.
Well, it's more just my interest in accessibility.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so they should, as Joel said, either, I don't know about next week, I forgot when we asked them to get the proposal in. But they were gonna take it and give it, give it a rough idea of how much their, their fee would cost. Which didn't sound actually that much. I, I thought we were expecting like a huge number, but it sounded pretty reasonable to get design, I mentioned, design going. And the idea has been TG Miller would get it ready for construction bids. And then we put it out there for, for bidding, so. That could probably be done towards the end of the year, and then maybe next year is. Start work. Okay.
We're suing?
Yeah. What's it?
I think is this week the week United Way is doing work at the parks also?
What's it?
Is this the week that United Way? That day of action is doing? I think I'm signed up to be there.
I don't know. Next way.
Their day of action. Maybe it's next week. Yeah, next week. I don't know, I was told we're replacing. The storyboards. At the park.
Oh, across the street?
Yeah.
Oh, I've, I've not heard of that.
I'll let you know after we do it, how it went. All right, on to development reviews. First on our agenda is 64 Valley View Road. Abdul Fanta and Mitchell?
Mitchell.
Mitchell, thank you, hi. Nice to meet you. Um. So we already have a public hearing scheduled, yeah, for today, and we're going to review the subdivision. If you want to say any words about. It, feel free if.
Right, I think we talked about it last month.
Yeah.
I'll do for you, it's really just drive a mine with a highway. Divide seven acres from the rest of my property would be tall to the west of, of highway. So the idea is to create a subject within the seven. Seven acres that's on the far side of the road looking from its own lot.
All right, I don't think we had any. Comments last meeting, except we did talk about, I think the bird habitat, but we moved past that. Does anyone have anything they want to discuss before we? Need to do. No, we don't have to do seeker before I open public hearing, okay?
Seekers are.
Right. Um, all right, shall I open public hearing? No comments? All right. I will open the public hearing. If anyone has any specific comments on the subdivision. We will make this loud. Don't see any. All right. Then we can close the public hearing. And. Move to a, if anyone wants to make a motion. For accepting the resolution proposed. Or if anyone had comment. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You need a second, yes. I'll be the second, aim to.
You all just make sure to speak aloud enough, I hadn't quite here all scat, so just make sure, it's not just sure.
What's that? Doesn't sound like it.
Berman?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Breder?
Yes.
Nucci?
Yes.
In my hair.
Yeah.
So, and you're all set, so Kelly will sign these three, we'll keep one, you take two. And then you'll take one down to the county assessment department. They stamp it and record it, then it goes to the counter, then it goes to counter clerk and then they record it. So. And. So.
All right, thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
You.
Meet you all, thank you.
Okay.
All right. On to. 365 Troy Road. We also looked back and saw. Um. Okay, so it has not gone to BZA yet, and we are making a recommendation.
It, it went to them last, yeah, so this one, as you recall, it's a subdivision that would require an area variance, just because they're creating a. A little bit smaller lot, they're required two acres. It did get reviewed by the Board of Zonal Appeals. At last month's meeting. And all that they were doing. Was accepting that the. Planning board is lead agent, remember you sent that notice of intent?
Yeah.
So they said, yes, great, planning board, please be lead agent for seeker. And then they also, again, per statute, they had to request. The planning board to provide a written recommendation concerning the variance, so they did not take action on the variance. I got the sense that, you know, there was. Nobody had any outstanding comments that seemed to be overly skeptical of the proposal. But so they're just looking for a written recommendation. I provided some basic suggestions for what that written recommendation could be. And I provided. In the staff memo, I provided what I would write to the Board of Zonal Appeals based on my suggested findings or the. Required five part balancing test, so this, these five questions. Or they're called the balancing test, that they're, they're what the, the Board of Zonal Appeals has to weigh and determine. For an area variance such as this, an area just means that the dimensional standard is being modified. The applicant doesn't need to meet all five stand, five tests, they don't need to pass all five of them. For, for a use variant, they do have to pass all five of them. But for an area variance, including one, they could fail, one would still be granted, but the board looks at is, the order of appeals is. Would the variance, if approved? Would the benefit to the applicant outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood? And if it, if it does, then they have to grant the variance. If they believe they find that the detriment to the neighborhood would outweigh the benefit to the applicant, they deny the variance. So that's just a summary of kind of what the Board of Zonal Appeals would look at, at. At the next time. So. And it looks like the applicant is not here tonight, which is a little unfortunate, I had amended them a couple of times to be here, but.
Um, I know they were here last time, then you'll bet some. Okay, so. Um, does anyone have any? Comments, just turn it off? In terms of, I think. We were leaning toward. A recommendation of approval last time, but might be my. Memory filling and things that might say. Okay.
I think we talked about that it was similar to what was in the neighborhood.
Yes. Yeah, that diagram was really helpful last time with all the different lots that were. In that area.
In terms of the question, is it a detriment? It's. But it falls. Into the same. By potential in that area, so.
I don't have any specific comments in terms of. Like changing any of the language you already put out there?
In terms of the.
Like if we were gonna make a recommendation that we would kind of say similar things along the lines of like. There's already. A number of lots that are less than two acres. It's, you know. Barely under. The required area, it's not like you're trying to ask for a half acre lot instead of a two acre lot.
It says it was 1.9.
Yeah.
1.812. Good.
I, I agree with the not changing the neighborhood character too, I mean. Just reading that is, it's, it's not like everybody's on 10 acre lots, suddenly they're gonna put in a, not wait, two acre lot.
Right.
There'd be other houses like that.
Um, I assume the conditions X, Y, and Z were just a generic throw it out there.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there, I think, I think the board could recommend whatever they want to the Board of Zonal Appeals. But the statute just says it provided a recommendation concerning the variance, so. I was suggesting, you know. Say approve it, approve with conditions X, Y, and Z. Or deny the variance, but that's why I'm putting in what I, what, what I find for this variance request, maybe to help. You know, the board think a little bit about what the recommendation can be, so I'm hearing that there's not really. Anybody completely intent this variance request. At least nobody's spoken quite yet about that, so maybe it's a recommendation to. You know, if, yeah, to, to approve the variant, that there are any, there's any conditions on it. There, there are a couple of things that I think the plat should show, I'm actually talking with, with John about this, as he's starting to overlap with, with my work. But they wouldn't necessarily change the variant necessarily, but. I do have comments on, on the plat.
Like the stream buffer?
Yeah, yeah, so maybe show the 50 foot stream buffer. It would be at the north end of the property line, there's a little intermittent stream that kind of, kind of rolls in here. The other one is that this property has two structures, so I'm curious why the surveyor did not add the second dwelling unit on the property. In 2017, they got a special use permit. From the planning board at the time to allow a, an ADU. It's above a garage.
Okay, 2017.
Yeah, and if you go onto the. County tax info, you can see it and it's assessed at that and. There's a sketch of that, so it's very clear it's there, you can drive by and see it. So I think.
Yeah, which doesn't look like they reference anything in their map references.
Yeah.
To that effect either.
It says in the new field book. At this time, so did he not even go out and update? How was this reblogged?
Oh, yeah.
Most budget.
I don't know, so I, I don't think that judging by just the aerial map of where that second unit is, it's a little bit north of the house, I don't think it will have any. Impacts of setbacks or anything like that, and it's still, it's still allowed by zoning, you, you don't have. Two units on the lot of an existing. A unit there. So I, I don't, I don't know why they didn't show it.
Well, that could be. Um, our, our good conditions then.
Yeah.
Put, make the plat complete and with the right area and setback and the, and the other. With that being.
It could be conditions, I mean, I don't think that would necessarily change the variance request, I think the condition would either appear even more. If you think that might be an impact to the neighborhoods, that, that would warrant reasonable conditions.
Oh, I see.
On the property.
Interesting.
But, but certainly adding the stream buffer, you know, might, might be that, just to show that that's there.
Can't hurt.
It can't hurt, I, I think, you know, asking for those two additions to the plat are, are, would be, you know, totally fine, but if there's something else, you think.
I forget, did they say they were planning to build a new structure so they would be coming back? With development?
So verbally, verbally, the applicant has said that they want to eventually build a house there for their parents. And I had, so.
It says, yeah, it says in the future.
Oh, okay, so it's on the short environmental assessment form.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
But if there's no conditions, you know, I don't, I don't need to pull teeth on this or. I think it's just as simple as somebody making a motion of, you know, what, what the recommendation would be and, or. Please.
Anyone want to propose something?
And maybe I look to John, because John's gonna start to overlap, so maybe I'll do, John, what would you?
Do you, is, is the secret determination also part of the resolution?
Where?
The seeker's on the docket tonight for, for the board to, to look at the environmental determination.
Yeah.
They, are you suggesting they do that first?
We could do that first, yeah. I don't think we feel it'll have any impact, but we could do it in that.
I guess the recommendation is not really advancing, it doesn't really matter the order.
Yeah. So if you want, we could do.
Over to that.
Secret person with the wheels turning about.
All right. I think it's pretty straightforward, I don't know if it's. We could put it up on the screen, I guess, if we want to. Think all of the categories. Are. In the low impact. Side of thing. The habitats was not, nothing was checked. So we should probably make a recommendation on that. If anyone else has any other comments to add to the list?
So maybe the habitats are, I think it's suburban.
Yeah. I don't know, would you consider that? Agricultural, still not really, it's more suburban.
Suburban, it's exceptional.
Yeah.
Does everyone agree with that?
Yeah.
I'm in 14, yeah.
And it just has the creek, there is no wetland, but.
Sure.
Need to do part two, yeah?
Yeah, I can pull that up.
Like the second meeting, we've been extremely quiet. Like the second meeting, we've been extremely quiet. But he is fucking. Conversation out.
Alright, so I just. I. My suggestions are that no or small impact may occur from this subdivision. And that I wrote. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the predominant development pattern of the neighborhood. Therefore will not have adverse environmental impacts. Uh, but feel free, we can add on to that. So choose. So there's a draft resolution. You. Termin negative. Negative declaration.
I'm allowed Ben. Some negative negative declaration.
I can second. Nope.
Yes.
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 Private.
Yes.
You change, yes. Yeah.
Back to those written recommendations.
A formal doesn't need to be.
It does, as I said, it could be as simple as we recommend to approve the variance. Well, maybe, but maybe giving a little. Because. You know, a couple sentences.
We recommend. Proving the variance. Given the. Similarities, similarity, yeah, of lot 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 size in the context of this. Area of.
Yeah.
Road.
And that the reduction is less than ten percent. Of the lot area. Was not substantial.
No. Adverse impact.
Maybe we. We maybe we recommend. Getting the.
Sure.
Step back. Noted on the. Freak and the additional structure added to personally.
Second. No. Second.
I made the motion.
My second, yeah.
Keep us moving along, yeah.
Yes.
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 Private.
Yes.
You chief?
Yes.
My. Yes. And then we'll take, we will schedule a public hearing in August, assuming. There is approval in July, that's what the stuff is, right, okay.
Yeah, I would say you could schedule it, but just note in the motion to schedule it that it's contingent of the. Horizontal appeals. Um, approving it at. Next meeting, if they don't approve it, then they won't schedule the public hearing.
Right. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
During the. Determined condition of the situation.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we do. The other one now or after everything? Oh, yeah, sorry. That would be important, huh?
Yes.
Um, yes.
David.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Did you chief?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do it right now.
Okay.
And I can, I can give a little opening to this, and you know, certainly, this was kind of a last minute thing, Mike reached out to me maybe a week or so ago. Right, which is a little bit past the deadline to get things to me, um, for a planning board meeting. So certainly, if if the, we could look at it, and since this this. One did have some history to, there was a subdivision on the property, the variance, there was a lawsuit. Lot of activity that, um, you know, the board certainly shouldn't feel under pressure to make. A amendment right now. There is a clause in the zoning ordinance about a zoning officer could make an amendment to a site plan, but it's for two foot changes, not. Thirty-five foot changes to a site plan. So, but maybe, maybe before we begin, maybe it's worthwhile to have have Mike come up properly and just say. He got this approval and I also changed it and we described it why and and everything.
Yeah, it can be followed the.
Yeah.
The mark that we found.
So. I guess I can start a little bit fair beginning.
Yeah.
Um, in November of twenty twenty, I purchased the property from Brian Miller. December of twenty twenty. I was sued by the neighbor at one sixty-five Mark Burger, um. I put in a. Site plan review for in January. Um, I've met other requirements, and then in uh, February. I, my site plan was approved, I think it was like four to three at the time. And then shortly after that month, we won the first lawsuit when he had sued the town of Danby, the zoning. The planning, myself and Brian Miller, we won that. One court fees, lawyers fees, everything, two days later, he turned around and sued us again. Um, the same group, um. During that time, Guy Crowe. Um, I I think I'm pronouncing his name right, the town lawyer. Asked me if there was something I could do to settle, because he had already cost the town twenty thousand dollars in lawyers fees. So I said. Sure, I I gave up my lawyers fees, court fees. Everything else, it was time of COVID, everything had gone up in the time that I had first put in. Um, and then in April of twenty twenty-one, um. I I came back again at the request, a- as part of the agreement that we would, um. Come through one more time, I'd moved the um, garage originally from the sixty feet that was from the property line. Cause there's a fifty foot um, setback. That you can't build in, so I had it at six sixty feet, so I agreed to go back to ninety feet. Um, and that was approved by the board, I believe it was unanimous, like five to nothing. Um, and in that time, I've had the garage built, I've met all the requirements. Um, I've I've been on the property, I've seen how the water flows and how drainage happens, and um. Through life, um, COVID, um, interest rates, my daughter's wedding. Now is the time that I've been able to, um, come forward and build, and, um. We have a builder, I have an excavator, and I have a concrete person. That you can originally see, like, I, there's a little bit of offset, the driveway is over three hundred, the first on the left. Is the original one that was approved back in twenty twenty-one. Um, the one on the right is the one that I'm requesting, the driveway has changed a little bit, um. And that has cost me over eleven thousand dollars to put in, cause it's over three hundred feet. And um, that was on a field, so that was a a grass field, and um, that. House was approved originally at, I believe it was like a hundred and thirty-five. I can't see, I I don't have it right in front of me. Hundred and twenty-five. Um, after speaking with the the building company, the um, excavator and concrete people. They were saying, um, it would, the land where it should be moved up a little bit more parallel to the property. Which would be, um. Ninety feet from the property line, which is still setback enough back forty feet from the, um. The, um. No build zone. As you can see, since in the four years, I've had a well put on there, there's power on there. Um, I've done everything, the only thing that isn't done right now is the. Septic, um, by Tompkins County Department of Health, because I don't know where the house is gonna be until you guys, um, approve it. Um, so all I'm asking is. Uh, approval for the movement of the property approximately thirty-five feet. Um, forward towards the property line, um, as I said earlier, there was a settlement and. Basically, the, um. The settlement says that, um. He or anybody in his family cannot oppose or ask anyone to oppose. And it basically said from the beginning beginning of time, so, um. I I. Out of. Um, thinking that. I was doing the right thing. Settled I, for the town of Danby as well, so there's no more court fees and lawyer fees, I settled. And, um, I came up with the agreement to move, and now after four years and some adjustments and. Speaking to the builders that are ready to build now. Um, and hopefully we can get it done before Christmas, that I need to get this approved. And as you know, most people, if they have land, they can just build wherever they want. Um, I've done everything that I've had to do these last four years in order to make sure that I've. Kept. Um, my side of the bargain, um, as you can see, the only thing that's really changed is the driveway. In the site, it's because, um, the way the land went and the flow of the water, I've had a lot of drainage put in there, French drains. Um, the way the water flows off, and. That's what I'm asking is just to move the property. Or excuse me, move the residence.
And the neigh- the neighbor.
Mister Burger.
Mister Burger, it is like within that kind of.
No, he's over diagonal to the, that part that is a square right in front.
Yep.
That's solar panels. He's over to the left and there. So there's, um, yeah, so there's solar panels there. Mister Burger still does own the property, it was originally, he. Disputed it because he was using it as an Airbnb, and now he's in long term. Rental, it's somebody else is renting it, so he doesn't even live there, but he wasn't living there at the time, he was using it as an Airbnb. Um, I've spoke to Ms. Vent long ago, she was in favor of it, she's my closest neighbor to the right. Um, the Malones that are across the street, um, all the co- the residents that are within five hundred um, feet of my property. Um, haven't had any objections to what I'm doing, Mister Burger was the only person that had the objection, and I believe it was because of, um. My personal belief was because, um, of racial views, cause he, if you guys, well, excuse me, the zoning board. Um, approved the variance back in June of twenty twenty. And he didn't file a lawsuit until I purchased the property in December of twenty twenty. And, um, so he had all those months to do anything when he, it was first done, he didn't do it until. I purchased the property, but unfortunately during the time of COVID. Um, normally you only had sixty days to oppose, but, um, the governor at the time allowed, I think it was, um. Ten months or twelve months. Because of delays through COVID that he could file a grievance or a lawsuit after that. So, that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have those minute, there was a question about, you know, whether we should see those minutes and everything, so actually Mike was kind enough in his first sort of email to me. He he sent me the minutes, so we 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 do have that, here's the the case file, most of this is a court case. Um, in there. But, um, I don't know what would maybe help right now, we can start with an aerial and just kind of look at everything, but.
Yeah, it's like that aerial. And then. Our. What I forget what our. Kind of. Plan of action. Would be.
The plan of action, I mean, it could be a a number of different things, so. You could say that you you could review this tonight, go through kind of the ordinance and everything that you have at hand. And, um, you could, you could take action on the on the request just to amend this site plan. You could, uh, say we need a little bit more information. And just, you know, ask to come back at another meeting. Um, you could also do that and schedule a public hearing for the next meeting or to another future meeting. You could do that, if you felt that, for instance. This created so much neighborhood discussion that maybe it's fair to allow the neighborhood also to. Be be notified, again. Uh, the 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 zoning ordinance does allow. Um, it does say that if the board finds that a. A amended site plan is substantially similar to an original plan. Uh, no public hearing is required, so the board could determine if this is substantial or not, and say no public hearing is required.
Let's start with the aerial.
Sure.
Mike, are you sure that that building is eight by forty? Or maybe eighteen by forty?
No, there's a different bill, or which building it's. There's a storage container that's eight by forty.
Then it's not to scale, just. So you know, are you sure that eight by forty building?
It's a, it's a storage container.
It's just like.
It's already been. No, that's it, that's already approved and that's on the property, so the garage and the storage container are already there. Yeah, the scale.
Scale argument was valid, but it's a small point, but.
Yeah.
The request is just to move the house, the location of the house just.
And then the driveway forward.
The drive has already been done.
Oh, okay.
The driveway, I had no control, that was the way they built it, based on the land.
And you mentioned the water, so the water's going toward the back of the property, right?
The water just flows off of the vents that's next door, as you can see the water, it's like, um, wetlands to the right of me. And a lot of water flows off of that. Um, and I've had to put in a lot of drainage, I still have to put in a four hundred and. Eighteen foot drain, uh, French drain along the left side, that's gonna cost me approximately eleven thousand dollars. Um, to just drain the water that's coming off of there, that's in addition to the house, I've already put French drains. In the front of the garage, because I had flooding two years ago, that was coming off of Mister Burger's property. But based on this, you can see Mister Burger's. Solar panels are in that little area, and his house is in, actually the Sapansky's. Um, front yard, the Sapansky's own that big field to the, um, left of the property. Um, my house will be over two hundred and fifty feet, which is farther away than his neighbor on the on the left. And there is. Still that big tree line, so you cannot see. His house or my house from either property. Um, the only part that's open is where the solar is, and he. Doesn't. Maintain them anymore, if you go by there, you can see that they're overgrown and completely covered, so he's not even using the solar panels. There's nothing, and there's. Uh, approximately thirty panels there. So, yes, so I'm just looking to build to the to the right of my garage. I just moving it up thirty feet.
Well, I get tired from you about the minutes from last time about how we landed on the ninety or the hundred and twenty-five last time, where it's at.
That was at his request, he he requested the variance, and that was granted, and then, um. I was approved for sixty feet by this board in January. But then, um, he he was, it was in the middle of the lawsuit, and we had won the lawsuit, and then, um. Part of the lawsuit was to come back to the board to get approval for the ninety fo- or the, um, thirty foot change. Because as Mister West, that was the former planner, said, it's moving over a certain amount of feet, so I have to get approval. I didn't have to get a public hearing change because of the fact. Um, it already been approved. Um, and it wasn't really significant change, according to them at the time. So, um.
I said, but how far are the solar panels from the property? The other property.
I believe it's about twenty-five feet.
I have, yeah, I don't have a measurement.
I believe that's in the December of twenty twenty meeting, cause minutes, it's in there, cause he had requested variance. Back then to get those solar panels put in. And the board approved his.
I know that the, yeah, the the lot lines are hard to see on that. I'm gonna fulfill the planning board, uh. The resolution.
I just think there's a great distinction when we're setbacks from someone else's residence versus. I mean, I feel like we're more likely to see someone complaining about solar being too close to the property. No, I I'm I'm just saying, like. We're we're protecting the solar.
Right.
Right.
Or I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, so no matter where I put my house, I'm gonna see his solar panels. It's just the way it is, right? Um, and I have applied for solar panels for my property, um, on the garage that's in the process right now. It faces south.
Yeah.
Yeah, so everything opens to the south, so. Um, from his property, you don't see the front, well. The rear of the garage. Where the doors are, and it's only a two bay garage, it's not. Is, um. The one person that commented earlier that it was a large garage, it's a thirty-two by forty. That was originally approved, and it hasn't. The one person that commented earlier that it was a large garage, it's a thirty-two by forty that was originally approved and it hasn't changed in size. Um nothing else has been built on there other than what was approved. There is a chicken coop, chicken coos, because my wife is put chickens up there, but. Other than that, there's no structures over the hundred and forty-four feet, square feet that would require permit.
What are people feeling?
I think it's a minor change. And it doesn't change anybody's view or anything else. Like you said, the only thing it would disturb is the solar panel's view.
Is that a a stream diagonally or is it just like a?
No, so under the white part, that that gray down the right side between myself and the fence property.
Um kind of like starting at the white box and going diagonally to the left, yeah, right.
Oh, no, that's just, this is a this is a very old. Old one, if I don't know if there's Google Maps now you can see, but um. But that's just a little bit older.
It's just kind of a lower area.
It's just it's just slopes away from Miller Road. It slopes to the south. Um not a whole lot, but. Yeah, so now you can see a little bit more and you can see that he doesn't even maintain his area where the solar panels are and it's overgrown. Um and the only thing I have there is that chicken area in the back, so it's fenced in. And um where the driveway comes, I have a well put on there. I had the electricity put on there in the time that everything's been approved. The thing to the white, to the left of the garage is just a enclosed trailer, so it's not, that's not. A shed or anything. It's just an enclosed trailer. No, it's not permanent. It's it's a travel trailer.
I'm just passing Kelly that these are the approved.
Cause I think we're in that email, right?
Yeah, so I'd sent around the the approval on the email. I also have pulled up the the variance approval and then the subdivision approval. Because it was between both of those actions that that got the that fifty foot. No build area upfront.
I believe that was June of twenty twenty, June sixteenth of twenty twenty was.
Yeah, so the the condition from the variant request was that condition one is that no buildings, including accessory buildings. But excluding school bus shelters shall be constructed in the narrow northern portion of the proposed parcel in area of approximately. A hundred feet wide by a hundred ninety-six feet deep. Um so that's. It's two hundred eleven, so a hundred ninety-six is kind of right. I'm just vaguely guessing here that it's it is that. Why that the pole portion of the flag lot? So that was the first condition. Second was that visual impact on the neighborhood as this. Oh, sorry, that the there's one condition and the adverse impact to be minimized is that visual impact on the neighborhood. As this area of the post parcel was very visible from the public road. So um here I'll I'll put up this. So then this was the condition. So the the blue is the BZA condition, say no no building there, the fifty foot setback is the green. And then also the 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 orange, the people said that as well. No.
No, it's still it's still almost double the green because it's a ninety.
So so his initial proposal was to. Uh have the house be cited a hundred twenty-five feet back. Um he's now asked her to be cited ninety feet back. It's still outside of.
I think this is the.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's a motion on the table.
Oh, is it? I'll second it.
We don't have any conditions, so we don't have to really say anything, right?
You don't. It's just discussion as an opportunity. If maybe somebody disagrees, wants to say why they disagree or.
No, I was just gonna say in support of it, we find that it's really exceeding the front step back as it is. So therefore we find that to be a minor change.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
So Mike, you're all set. Well, so Kelly will sign off on the on the site plan and and decision there and uh. That'll get emailed to you. So you have that for your records and then you when you file for your building permit, we'll just reference that.
All right, on to zoning amendments.
Right.
As proposed by the Regulatory Review Committee. Especially officially. This one does not have clusters. We're meeting again tomorrow on the.
Yeah, so um yeah, so these are the proposed amendments to the Hamlet Center, Hamlet Neighborhood Zone Districts. I'll pull them up and I've actually since talked to John about them and and uh. Might be some some other thoughts that that might go along with them that. You know, there's nothing.
Opinions aren't enough.
I think there I think there I think there are good things to consider. So yeah, where this is, is that the Regulatory Review Committee has been meeting for the last six months or so and. Looking at these and they're ready to maybe pass these on to the town board. So going to the planning board makes sense. Certainly, we don't need to come to the end of them tonight, you know, if if we just get a little exhausted and say, let's just call it or, you know, Kelly says that. Um it's not like there's any timeline here necessarily. It would be nice to have the town board consider amendments to these because these are some things that. Have been talked about for a little while, but um just to put that out there, there's no pressure on kind of. Need to say, yes, we agree, you know, and and then move right on. If you want to think about them, take them back to the committee um or or recommend that.
And our intent is, I think, tell me if I'm wrong, talk about them to my ear. If we don't have any major objections, then you address.
Right, yeah.
And we can recommend.
Right.
So I'll pull these um word document and we'll start taking a look. So a a number of the 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 impetus for opening these these regulations back up after it's only been a few years since they were passed. Were one was like when the Dandy Food and Drink. Proposed, you know, it's it's marked up there. It went through site plan, had to get a couple of variances. Um there was another proposal for um. Uh it was for the coffee shop down in nineteen fourteen Dandy Road. It wasn't on the corner. So the planning board, I think, was there was some. Head scratching going out of, you know, is is this the right for these, you know, the right regulations for this? If if the the intent is to encourage development in the Hamlet, are these regulations making it a little bit too cumbersome um for for folks? So. And I also too, I I ran the the standards by Jamie. Thanks, Jamie. You weren't on the committee, but Jamie offered some, especially this opening. Salvo into the Hamlet Neighborhood Zone. Um addition where Dandy envisioned this Hamlet as a walkable, green and community-centered landscape. That honors local heritage while supporting thriving social and ecological life. With thoughtful tree planting, integrated stormwater design and species diversity, the ordinance fosters a resilient, welcoming public realm and strong sense of place. Dandy's Hamlet vision includes a continuous healthy tree canopy to ensure shady shady, walkable and diverse and resilient trees, trees, streetscapes. Root zones free of utility and kind of construction conflicts and a landscape that features green infrastructure to manage stormwater at the source. Check water quality and reduce the negative impacts of flooding. I know that Jim, you offer though this. Really for the landscaping standards, but I thought this was a great lead into the actual zone because. I think it creates a nice image of what the what the intent is. So moving on to the actual changes. And I'll just start talking, but. Certainly, if you're like, wait. Stop. Let's talk about that. Just just stop me. You know, I've I've seen these hundred times, so I can rattle them nicely, but I probably do. So. Just.
What you're gonna read to the baby to put it.
Just for new buildings.
Raising a little planner.
So the the first the first a amendment or suggested amendment is looking at vehicle parking. So. Some of this was around existing buildings in the Hamlet, in the Hamlet Zone Districts. Um and if those buildings are gonna be proposed to be reused for for use, that's that that is allowed. And if that building is set way far back, um right now, the standards require that vehicle parking is in front of the building. Or to the uh oh, excuse me, sorry, either either to the rear or to the side of a building. It's not allowed in front of a building. So the thought is that to allow for the reuse of structures. Um to allow for vehicles, it's to say that this standard is really just for new buildings. Questions on that.
Makes sense. If it's already built way back because of parking other than in front. So we don't want to make that place not payable to be a business, right?
The next proposed change has to do with the corner lot provision. So the in the this is, we're just talking about that Hamlet neighborhood. And maybe it would help if you want, I just pull up a map of the zone district. Anybody just wanna get an idea of remember where it is? Jerry. Thank you. Yeah, let's let's do that. Uh. And actually, this is a great time to showcase that Dandy has a great interactive zoning map. So we're gonna go right there. You're gonna follow along with me.
I use it all the time.
Great, thank you. I'm I'm hoping that soon we're gonna link the regulations to it and we're gonna make it, we're gonna build onto it. Um so you're on the town website, known to departments, planning and zoning. Or if you've had the pleasure of having me email you, it's under my signature, but on the zoning. Maybe we can make this right on the front page. People don't have to uh. Oh, great. Website's not working. Perfect. Um well, that failed miserably. I'm gonna go to. I'll just pull it up from my signature. One second here. All right. Pretend that like work, we're on this interactive zoning map with damage. Great. The. Make this a little bit bigger. The Hamlet neighborhood is the four is the sort of tan orange. This is Miller Road as it comes into Route ninety-six here. The Hamlet neighborhood stretches a little bit further up. Ninety-six B from Miller Road stretches down here to the former Dobson property. Goes up Gunderman a little bit past the school, just a little ways. Goes up Hornbrook just to where the entrance to the highway department is. Um then it extends down to past the the. These this pink is the Hamlet Center. So we'll talk about that next, but the Hamlet Center is just the. Right through the Hamlet Center. So then going up all the hill, it goes up to uh Jennings Pond a little bit. And I see where the county actually, I need to correct this actually for the county because. This was a a piece that got added to the Hamlet neighborhood, but I it was not supposed to include the corner. So that's just a. It's pretend that that is where it should accurately show. I'll have to get the county on that. But the Hamlet neighborhood extends onto Jennings Pond Road and and back and then over to Michigan Hollow, a little bit up that way, past um. It's just a few properties down. So I'll zoom back out. That's the central Hamlet neighborhood. And then in West Dandy, it's um a little bit of a tighter concentration. There's this is Station Road as it comes down um to Spencer Road. And.
What he said.
Don't encourage him. So that's that's the Hamlet neighborhood here. And actually, the 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 property we just saw and Michelle's property that was just subdivided was this large. Piece of land that actually goes into Newfield. Um and then she just subdivided off this seven acre chunk here. But anyway, that's the Hamlet neighborhood. These these two areas of town um over the hill here. So that's what we're talking about. All right.
Excuse me, Greg. Uh could you remind us, what are these sort of pink neighborhoods? For example, the one uh right next across the road from Jennings Pond?
This.
Yeah, those pinks.
That's the low density residential.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Um but as I said, I need to double check something because that this Hamlet. Boundary should not go all the way to that corner. It's kind of gets cut anyway. It's like. So back to these regulations, everyone has that visual in their mind. Um. The Hamlet neighborhood, if you recall, it requires that. Well, it says that there's certain uses. Religious institutions, restaurants, bars and other places serving food, re repair shops, personal services, cottage industries. Um under three thousand square feet and retail uses under three thousand square feet. Those are a lot in the Hamlet neighborhood, but only on corner lots. And. At least in Central Dandy, that was seven and two are in the flood plain. So really, it's like there's five lots for these kinds of uses out of the uh. I should I have the numbers of how many properties are actually in the Hamlet neighborhood, but uh it's a couple hundred in total. So there's there's not many for these types of uses. And so the 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 change, the proposed change is to say corner lots or on Route ninety-six B Dandy Road. This means that they're still only required or allowed on corner lots in West Dandy. But they're allowed up here in Central Dandy, also fronting onto ninety-six B. The reason is why didn't the committee also allow or recommend that they're allowed on thirty-four ninety-six? That's because that right of way, if you ever driven that road, it's a little more windy. It's got more difficult sight visibility. It might not be a good idea to allow these kind of uses, the more commercial uses to be pumping onto that road. Um so still maintaining the corner lot down there in the Hamlet neighborhood. And then up here, it's pretty much just allowing it along the stretch of the state route and on corner lots. For instance, if somebody, a developer were to come in and make a new road. For instance, if somebody, a developer were to come in and make a new road. Any questions on that recommendation?
I think we want to build more stuff, and everything else, we've got to do that, I just think. He said there's so few corner lots and. Some of them, I mean, most of them are not even for sale right now, so. I think we're gonna expand or have any kind of other businesses here, then we need to do that.
What about like that? Um, we looked at it in review one time on Hornbrook, on the right side. It was gonna be like a little micro industry, maybe candles?
Yeah, that's in the.
Commercial zone district.
Oh, okay.
The Hamlet neighborhood extends up to the highway department's entry.
Okay.
And then the property, the two properties just after that on the right is on commercial. B. Yeah. There's not many commercial zone districts in town. Um, those are the only ones, well, there, yeah, there's that. Where Oasis used to be, it's one up on Bald Hill. There's, there's really only a handful.
But there's, I mean, this is. Beside the fact that this, but there are no few properties that are not in great condition that are right on ninety six B. I mean, in terms of if we really want to bring some more stuff in, are they in? In places where it would be okay? Well, they're in the Hamlet, because they're in the Hamlet, right?
You mean like the building next to us? You mean like the building next to us that's falling down?
Yeah, yeah, but that's not the only one.
Oh, I know.
We all know that. Yeah, because I would think that would be where we would want to have some development. Of something. Yeah, now, with this extra line, they could put a business there, yeah. There's some other things that have to happen first, but. Looking way ahead.
Just calling at three o'clock. Next Tuesday, so. Just wondering if maybe you had a different.
I didn't hear the question.
Joel, can you mute yourself, please? Yeah, this is, I mean, zoning is one piece of the puzzle, but zoning is not the. Yeah, it's just gonna enable development, but development's gonna, gonna take it out, right? Okay, so moving into more of the substantial changes here. There's a lot of discussion about the maximum setback, that was a new requirement of the, of the zoning from twenty twenty two. And so blanket across all the Hamlet neighborhood, the, the maximum setback from the road. Um, twenty feet. And so there are places where that might work well. Along some side streets. Like Maple Ave, I always think of Maple Ave down in West Dambi, it's just quieter and. Also a bit closer together, um, but that twenty foot is also along here on ninety six. So requiring somebody to build twenty feet to ninety six might just be pretty, pretty difficult to me. So there was a lot of look at, should be, should just be modified, and, um. Uh, I did a little analysis of all the buildings in the Hamlets of what's the average setback by road? It was, the standard deviation was like a hundred, two hundred feet, it was all over the place. Uh, I really tried to, I was trying to find maybe, maybe we could just by road, some roads deserve more and others less. It, it felt really like a status shot, and, uh, we ultimately came to. Maybe just get rid of it. And to just, just require more, just say minimum ten foot setback and. A lot of the changes that you're gonna see coming up here are, the intent is to lean more heavily on the design guidelines. So we'll kind of jump into that, and. Again, do you want me to slow down, stop on this? We, we can. We can top talk on that.
That was a lot of work, though.
That one was a lot of work, yeah.
On your part.
Well, I, I think it was the last, it was the last change that the committee made. So. Coming up here in the form requirements, the proposal is to remove all of the form requirements and just verbatim, put them into the guidelines. Now, one thing, though, that. John and I talked about, John, I'm going to, sorry, implicate you here. Is that. The way the current standards are written. It. It's, it starts to, uh, call out the design guidelines as a, as a reference tool. Even if it's just the planner using them. So, for instance, right now, the, the, the zoning says that one to four residential units in this zone district. Are allowed by right, meaning they don't, they don't commit a planning board, they just go right to the code enforcement officer. He passes it to me, I look at for zoning compliance, and if it needs zoning, it needs zoning, and I pass it back to him, and he issues a permit. In, I'll sort of scroll down here, in this, the, the current zoning, this text here. It's, it, it says that all new buildings that are fifteen hundred square feet or more must comply. With the design guidelines. So this means that even if there's, um, somebody coming in by right. To build a home and it's sixteen hundred square feet, for instance. It needs to meet the design guidelines. And that means it would be, it wouldn't go to planning board, even if there was just three sixteen hundred square foot homes, they wouldn't go to planning board. They would come to our office and I, and I would reference the design guidelines. John brought up a really good point today, and it was more of just an advisement that. The design guidelines, because they're so squishy and, um. Subjective, right, that they're really, they really should be used more by the planning board and not the planner. I was drawing on my experience from a former job a long time ago when I was in development review. And as part of my staff duties, we had design guidelines, and, and we did administrative review. Um, so I was thinking that, well, we can, I also, as planner, can lean on the design guidelines. For, for some of these reviews, and those of you on the regulatory review committee. You know that as part of the design guideline amendments, and we'll look at those, one of my suggestions was that not only. Reviews that go through site plan, but buildings that are above a certain square footage should, should meet the design guidelines. And so to John's advisement of just saying, separate those out of, uh. Anything that, that might require design guidelines should really be for planning board. And then finding that line with, you know, wherever that, uh, reviews that don't require planning board shouldn't. Such terms sort of be required to meet the design guidelines, but it could be a, hey, we suggest you look at this, and that's about it. Uh, do you want to say more on that?
Just, just to add a few, uh, uh, words, which would be, you know, the. The planning board and other boards are enabled to, uh, make discretionary. Decisions, discretionary approvals, and staff are not, they're ministerial. And so they, they don't make discretionary, uh, decisions, they, you know. Their standards and, okay, building permit, if you meet this, 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 and this, I'm gonna stand in firm with, you know. But, um, this, you know, so that's the distinction discretionary versus ministerial. Yeah, and there could be, um, you know, you could describe in the audience, you know, between this. Twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, whatever it was, and this size, um. Please try to follow the design. Nobody's gonna, you know, review it, but, um, please do, you could have that kind of thing. And then, of course, there is the other discussion that we had, and you could potentially. Do away with that little thing. Uh, to just say, you know, things about this. Site plan, design guidelines, things under that. No site plan, no design guideline, make it clear.
Alright, so, so with that, that. I think it's a really good suggestion, um, that. Maybe it needs to be sort of folded back into. The committee's discussions and then have it come back here, but this was already on the agenda, I wanted to sort of start talking about them and. That. So right now, the recommendation is to still say, hey, all these standards in the form requirements are gonna get put into design guidelines. But the, the, the trigger that we were recommending was that all new buildings. Not all new buildings going through site plan, it's all new buildings, period. Equal to or greater than twelve hundred square feet need to meet the design guidelines. And so what John's saying is that it can get problematic, because then if there's buildings that don't require site plan review, they're just reviewed administratively. Then I as staff doing ministerial review, I'm using some subjective guidelines. Uh, to make that determination, and it's cleaner that if I'm not, staff is not part of. That sort of design guy, like in, in, in forced design guidelines under development. So it could be as simple as saying, all new buildings going through site plan review, equal to or greater than this square footage need to meet that. Or just simply all new buildings going through site plan review.
But I guess the way we've set it up right now, though, is we've taken stuff out of here. And put it in here that is not subjective, and therefore either needs to be put back in here. Or.
Oh.
Something to that effect, because. If it's not, if some of it isn't put back in there, then some of the stuff that is just a building coming to you. Won't have to meet those. And we don't want everything, we weren't trying to require. At all new buildings over twelve hundred square foot to come to the planning board. Like, we're trying to keep it easier for people to get through the process, so I think. We're gonna have to look, we'll have to probably take it back to the committee then and look at what. Is more of an actual requirement and either put it back in here or. Something to that effect.
Oh, I see, okay, okay, so there, there's two things there, so one, you're saying that there's so, some of these standards. That are being proposed to be put into the guidelines are very. Clear, they're like, all new buildings have to be forty percent of the width of the lot, new buildings. Well, it says should, new buildings and new lots should be designed so that buildings fill a minimum forty percent. I think.
Which I think was probably us trying to make that language to fit more in the guideline, but like, buildings may not have blank walls greater than fifteen feet.
I still.
Like, stuff like that, I feel like.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe that's not the best example, but some, like, some of it is very clear and isn't, like, it should be, or we would like it to be, it's like, no, like, that's. That's what it is.
I think even, and, and John, I wonder what you think, that, what Kelly's saying is that if there's a, the standard that is very prescriptive of what it wants. And then that standard verbatim gets moved to the design guidelines. Is all of a sudden that design guideline like a requirement that hasn't happened, or, or would you say it's?
Well, that was my question, because everything wholesale, I moved to the guidelines, and my, you know, this is my first impression, I've never seen, I didn't go. To committee meetings, I haven't read through the entire new board and sell the stuff, but, yeah, I mean, it's like, are any of these things, things that you want to be hard and fast. Um, zoning ordinance stands. Versus somewhat looser, loosey goosey design guidelines that are more subjective. Um, and so it's just really, it's up to the town and, and to figure out, okay, but. What are our best things that you, that are, everybody must meet those versus, you know, you should and please do this, et cetera.
Okay, yeah, the other thing I was seeing is signage, like you, signage is typically in zoning. It's not usually like a guideline thing of, we would like to see, I mean, some of it is, but like, very specific, like, some of the specific stuff. Should probably just be in zoning if we're not gonna make this a requirement of all of them. Anyway, I don't have to throw the pot and like, make it a whole drawn out conversation here, but.
Right, well, those, yeah, but, but those.
And some of us came about because people could meet most, but not all, you know, and then it was like, do we want the applicant to, like, just be able to. Right, like, that was some.
It was at the Singaprene Homes.
Yeah.
That, that's where it came out, that's why I brought it up, is. These folks that are just building a Singaprene Home in the Hamlet, they're, they're met with these.
Like, buildings must fill forty percent of the lot with, and the, like, that's hard for just one house to take up. All depending, because again, our lots are so irregular, there's not uniform size. So, yeah, I don't, but I guess. Maybe we just have to go back and tweak, like, some. Some, I think, should have discretion to say, like, you don't, you don't need to do that, I think some are overreaching and some. Probably.
Right, and then, um, to your other good point, Kelly, about, um. Right, you, you don't want, all of a sudden, everything needs to go through site plan review.
Yeah.
That, that's not what I was suggesting, what I was saying was, what, and, and this is, you know, me just, i- is that saying, um. All, all the buildings that require site plan review that are equal to. You know, this square footage would go through the design guidelines, so that basically, for instance. Alright, so for instance, in the Hamlet neighborhood, there's no maximum size of an accessory structure. Whereas in the rural one, rural two, there's a maximum size of that, in the Hamlets, it's the opposite, it's. There, there's no limit to that, except for your bulk requirements, your setbacks, I, impervious surface coverage, things like that. But conceivably, somebody could build a two or three thousand square foot accessory structure. Just with a permit. They wouldn't go through site, they wouldn't have to meet site plan review if they're not in a reparing buffer, things like that, um. And that would not be required to meet the design guidelines, we might think, please, we would like you to. Um, what, what I was trying to capture with the committee was saying, any building regardless of site plan review. Or not, it's over this threshold, should meet these guidelines, and. You know, it, it makes sense, it's just that, um. I'm, I'm hearing a concern that. Throwing staff in, in a just sort of design guideline world might be a little bit problematic. As I said, I did it in a past job and it, and it worked fine, um, but I, it was probably just set up. For administratively different and was a much bigger department, so.
But what you were just saying with that, so somebody could have like a seven hundred square foot house and a two thousand square foot garage on the property?
Yeah, that's, that, you don't want that.
No, but I'm just saying that's. Basically how it's written now, or is that just an example of what could have?
I'm just, I'm throwing out an example.
Okay, cuz. Yeah, that sounds like something we wouldn't want to have.
You'd still, you'd still look to the definition of accessory structure, which talks about subordination, so that, that structure has to be subordinate. It doesn't say subordinate in size, it just says subordinate, so you could probably, you know, I think, this is.
That clears it right up.
So, a lot of places, mostly urban ones, usually limit the size of accessory structure to. Compared to your size of your house, you have a, you have a fifteen hundred square foot house. Your accessory structure cannot exceed that amount, because then it's not accessory, it becomes bigger than your house. Dambi's, the definition. Sort of, uh, the spirit, I think, is around that, it doesn't, it, it talks about that the structure is subordinate. To the primary structure, it doesn't say it has to be smaller. So the way I look at it, and I think that past planners have too, is. Dambi is a rural community where people often have.
Farms.
Smaller houses, thousand, twelve hundred square foot houses, and then they have. A tractor, they've got ATVs, they've got, um, equipment and things that. It's okay if they have a fifteen hundred square foot garage and they've got a twelve hundred square foot home, I, I. To me, the use is still subordinate. The pri, the, the, the primary use of the property is residential, there's a family living there. It's a family, and then their, their, their garage is for equipment, nobody's living there, it's not a business, the use is subordinate, so I'm. I'm. That's how I'm looking at, at that, now, if somebody were to be, I think I. I'm just gonna pull that thread a little bit, if somebody were to propose a. Giant ten thousand square foot outdoor building, um, I think that's where.
It's not supportive.
It be, it be, it starts to not look as simple, I don't know, we haven't crossed that bridge yet, and I think maybe that's why. In the last zoning update, Dambi limited the size of accessory buildings in the rural one, rural two, low density residential zone district. In the last zoning update, Dambie limited the size of accessory buildings in the rural one, rural two, low density residential zone district. But here in the Hamlet, no, there's not an maximum size. For an accessory structure.
I would think it would be opposite, I would think you'd want it more structured in like the hamlet, where it's small houses and out, where it's more rural, where people might actually need it for farm equipment and other stuff. You wouldn't have the cap on the size of the accessory. But. I think.
I I live I live next to a five thousand square foot barn and it's it works well, it's a huge property, so I didn't really notice it.
Right, but that's more rural area, right? They're not tied to those.
I know, sorry.
Five minutes outside of Lithica, outside of downtown. Um I think there was, there was different intent there, the the I think the intent behind that was. Hamlet should be allowed to develop with with lots of development and we don't really care about the size necessarily, besides the bulk requirements. The rural areas, it's more the sensitive areas, the environment of limiting the amount of impervious surface impacts to wildlife. Uh farm structures are still exempt from size limitations. So if somebody truly is doing agriculture, then they don't have a limit on on those buildings.
Makes sense.
All this to say, I think, you know. There might be other. We we might need to relook at these again, just to maybe be sure that. There's a distinction between. Site plan review and uh or just make sure the design guidelines are not something that the planner necessarily is. Enforcing so much that they're really just for the planner.
And is agriculture now? Bigger than cows and? I mean, there's all kinds of different agriculture type things that people do now. Do they all fit under the same roof that this, you know, we're describing it?
The Dambie's definition. Well, it doesn't have a definition, but it's it's. It's under the state definition of customary farm operation. Which would include a lot of things. And maybe it's worthwhile to have a little training session sometime, too, we could go over some of that, because. We are dealing with uh, we are looking at certain farm operations and. What their allowances are, where does the farm operation? How far does it extend to the activities that they do on site and where are they maybe beyond that farm protection? At the whole.
Another ball of wax.
Whole ball of wax.
A farm built, a huge barn, and then they store bolts in it. For. Their ground bolt storage, then that would be like kind of not really agricultural.
And I think the question we see a lot is like when a ciderie becomes a music venue, like.
Yeah.
Process, yeah, cuz you're, yeah. I don't know who was on the planning board when South Hill Cider started. But that was then what it is now. Very different.
Yeah. So.
But then we had the one where the person owned farmland somewhere else, was trying to bring a.
Yeah.
Cider-y food place that wasn't really connected to a farm and tried to say, well, it's a farm to take. And it was dean because it was not connected in any way to a farm, it did not count, it was just their home, they were turning into a business. So.
South Hill Cider is in Dambie.
Oh, it is, actually.
It's on with Dambie's first conservation easement.
Okay.
Yep. Want to keep going over these amendments here, Kelly?
Yeah. It's a puzzle I'm.
More and.
When I first started. Yeah.
Maybe we just sift with. This piece, and we'll we'll come back for the guidelines of the.
Sure, sure.
Well, you you gave us stuff to kind of. Read through and think about, too.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, I mean the. Yeah, I think it it's worth maybe to um. Go back through this again to before it goes goes to town board, you know, the the hopeless get to town board this month, but. Um it's it's been helpful, uh also to have another fresh set of eyes on it, thank you to John for that, just a little extra. Look at it, we've been, I think that we've gone glossy looking at it. That, yeah. So. Looking at the the landscaping requirements, a lot of these were Jamie's suggestions, so I'll I'll. Yeah, just just to make sure that they're reasonable and forcible um. That they that they make sense, and Jamie even offered to provide a a tree list, a non-native. Non-invasive.
I was like, wait, not native?
Non-invasive. Non-invasive tree list, um so that'd be great. And.
And given my office is on Speed Street, can we pick ones that don't drop berries all over the sidewalk?
What I want to jump into, unless there's any questions on the landscaping. Perfect questions on landscaping, yeah.
No.
Yeah. Great. One thing, I I'll jump into the Hamlet Center and maybe we this could be like where we end.
Yeah.
Kind of look at it like that. One of the proposals for the Hamlet Center, oh, I I I kind of read by, but the. Adding the same language for the Hamlet Center, the opening zone. Uh making vehicle parking for new buildings, requiring it. You know, just for new buildings only so that. Again, allowing existing buildings in the Hamlet Center to just be reused without having to meet. You know, forced their parking behind it and all that thing, so the the intent is to help people out reuse buildings, it's a when environmental standpoint. One of the proposals, yeah, John.
And and that's just for accessory uses, cuz that's the section that it's in, is that correct?
Yeah.
So it's just for accessory use?
Yeah, you you know, it is interesting, I I don't know.
Because if it wasn't for accessory uses, this kind of thing is actually related to the next section, which is what we're going through the. But it's just for rene, so.
Okay, well, maybe we bring that up in this next section, um. I always thought that's been calling parking a use. I. I never liked the idea of parking being put in a use table, I always, like, parking is a design feature. Unless you have a lot that is specifically used for parking, but in my mind, vehicle parking. If it's associated with a business, it's a design feature of a site, it's not a use.
This aspect should be in the parking section of the ordinance, right?
Which do we have?
Yeah, it doesn't really make sense, like having a yield list, that's a great point.
Okay. Okay, this next um. This next proposal. Right now, uh in the Hamlet Center, all these, every use. Besides agriculture. And besides one to four unit dwellings. Have to go through site plan review. I thought maybe some uses should be exempt from site plan review if they are. In an existing building, you know, somebody sells house, like just take the house next door. Um. And let's say Olivia wants to sell it and convert it into some offices. So right now, she would have to go through site plan review for that. My thinking was that. You know, if it's just i- an existing building, um maybe they don't need to go through site under view, that it can just be through a building permit. I put some conditions in there. That if there's certain conditions that are met, then it would go through site plan review, so one is that the total gross floor area. Of that existing structure or including any proposed addition is four thousand square feet or greater, it goes through site plan review. Or if the site is disturbed by one half acre more, it goes through site plan review. Now. The committee agreed with that and and here we are today, so. Now bring in John and John's got a fresh set of eyes out here, it was it was very helpful. We just started testing these out today, different uses like uh a club or a. What what do we?
Gas station.
A gas station. In my mind, a gas station is probably not going to reuse a house. For their gas station, right, so this is.
Sure they won't get government approval.
This is a little bit of a hedge, you know, saying. A lot of these uses will probably just, if they really wanted to use an existing. A a site with a house on it. Likely just remove that structure, but there's certain uses like an office, maybe a life care facility um. Community center, I don't know, you could just start to maybe a church that might just reuse the the building. And my thought was in the spirit of what Dambie's intention is, which is. In a lot of helping people, you know, develop here in the Hamlet. That to allow sort of an easier track to approval for existing buildings. Um essentially encouraging reuse of existing buildings, that you don't have to go jump through a lot of hoops. But John brings up a good point, that maybe some of these, you really do want it to get planning board look at it. Um so. Those folks on the committee. But I think it's a good point and and.
And also the scale.
The scale.
Thousand might be.
Right, so one thing we talked about was maybe it's just lowering these thresholds, that four thousand square feet, maybe it's lower to a thousand. Um. Saying that if you have a house here in the Hamlet. Uh again, this is Hamlet Center only, this is not Hamlet neighborhood. Hamlet Center, it's just a few of these properties here. Gathering, town hall, some of these properties here. If they're under, if if so, if it's a nine hundred square foot home. You know, maybe that would would be exempt from site plan review for some of these, and then lowering that site disturbance down to maybe a quarter acre. The idea behind that is that if they wanted to add parking. You know, and a house has one part of a driveway and somebody wanted to put in a. Uh care facility and they needed five parking spots, they might disturb a quarter acre and then it would trigger site plan review.
Well, of course, this is related to the other thing. Right, what's required to apply to uh design guidelines?
Right now?
Right, in terms of the threshold, you know, the other threshold is what, twelve hundred?
Right.
Things twelve hundred feet. Gotta apply at the site, you know, the uh design guidelines. And this is. Kind of getting to what you were talking about earlier, that there's this level for design guidelines, at this level for, you don't need anything, and. Maybe it's aligning.
Right, oh, you're saying that the four thousand, we brought down to like the twelve hundred or wherever is the threshold for design guideline review, is that it's?
Maybe, I don't know, it's just, uh it would then make sense that, okay, if that site plan is required, then the design guidelines apart.
Yeah, those those two numbers should, because it's a. Confidential. I have a question. Do we have? I always see like you will see this A through X, you know. Do we have to have all of those in there, can we cross some out? Of of the example of the uses. Like, could we remove gas stations or things that were like, oh, no, that can't?
Be allowed there?
Well, not that it can't be allowed, but it can't just without approval.
What you're getting, what what you're suggesting.
And we share your opinion.
Yes, they, these require site plan, these, if they're an existing building and they meet these conditions, they they can just be, yeah, certain.
But I still think that point about this square footage here and this word footage there, like, should go down again.
Any other thoughts on this?
Uh I mean, basically, you can look at all of the buildings in the Hamlet Center, right, and try to figure out, I mean, that's probably what you did. Right, to say like, what is the square footage of the existing buildings and? Did you do that already as part of this process?
Yeah, I mean, the the biggest one is the church, it's eleven thousand square feet. Yeah. The the gatherings, four or five thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Um. So again, so converting those would automatically trigger site under view, but. I'm very open to it, what what do others?
Might have a question that comes to mind is if you remember the eagle, I mean, I know that wasn't it wasn't an existing building, but. Um, you know, when a car shop, I mean, somebody could take a garage, an existing building, and do a car shop. And because there are residences, there were residential buildings right close by, there were expectation, you know.
That weren't planned.
Garbage can't be here, doors that have to face as well, I mean, so that it doesn't impact the people who live in the area. Um, so I mean, there are things like that, that. Certain. Um, do you know? Let me, I want to say, we need site plan review for those things. Yeah, I was like, do you, do you, do you know, did they take the gas tanks out from where that gas station was?
What gas station?
Pendletons?
Gundamans. Do we know?
Yes.
Whether they were ever.
Zach just bought it, you should ask him.
Oh, really, Zach just bought that property?
He has an option.
Uh, I mean, that's just something we he might want to know.
Yeah.
But man.
No, exactly, sure, you look it up. Excessively.
But I don't remember, because that was kind of, they took a part of, they took a little part, stopped doing a little bit, and then a little bit more and a little bit more, I wonder what actually. Happened in the end.
Pretty sure it got cleaned up.
What did you say?
I'm pretty sure it got cleaned up.
Oh, oh, pretty sure.
I guess my counter argument is that there are so few lots. That are Hamlet Center.
Yeah.
Should we go back to the front of the zoning plan?
Sure, yeah. And I know we're not gonna solve it here tonight, but that's kind of my counter. Like, are you saying, should we even have a separate zone? Oh, no, I'm just saying, like, does it matter that the threshold? Is high.
Right.
And that we're not requiring site plan review if it's.
Because there aren't going to be that many.
Not for the whole Hamlet.
You know, actually, I should, I. This is a, this is hard to see, I I'm this, this is Gundamans, this is the gathering. Site right here, the property next door, I could probably do, you know, I'm thinking as we're going through this, that. It might be, it could be helpful if I help some really, make some really nice graphics of, you know, here's the Hamlet Center, we're the existing buildings, and here's the Hamlet neighborhood. Um I just sent you all the the tech amendments, but it might be helpful to have some visuals, so. Uh I don't know if this quite, oops. Going run away. Um. In other words, it's hard to see with all these overlay districts, like what's going on here. Um. I don't think I can turn it off.
Mm-hmm.
Great, um. But going then down towards the, this is the town hall where we are now, so the, this is the Hamlet Center, from from the town hall down to Bald Hill. These properties here, so lanes automotive, and then the corner house next door. Going up Bald Hill, and then the 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 two houses on Bald Hill, the Hamlet Center, and the old. The vacant site where the gas station was, then there's a house next door, Hamlet Center. Cross the street is church. And then there's. Uh I I know a house there. And then you get to the multifamily uh that Olivia owns, that the two properties that include the the market as well. And then we can jump on down. Go to the West Dambie. You know that somebody in the audience has a property in the Hamlet Center. Mm-hmm.
Is their Hamlet Center also north of there?
Nope, that's it.
Well, it's just, y- yeah, yeah, we we have looked at that, so, yeah, it was.
Lots of like by the farms.
The gathering.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, there's that too, right?
This is. Yeah, so the cluster near the town hall and over to to the church in Bald Hill and then up just past Horn Brook Road. Couple properties going to Horn Brook Road and up to Gundamans where the gathering is. Um. And West Dambie, it's.
I guess quite a bit more of West Dambie.
Yeah, West Dambie is a little more.
Cause there's smaller lots.
Maybe what can be helpful, I'm like thinking of things that'd be like graphics to show to just. Pull all the building data out from these zone districts and show. What the size range. Pull all the building data out from these zone districts and show what the size range is of these, we could, we could. What they're being used for currently, just the size of them. Anything else that might help as you sort of look at these. Standards, but. And then I I guess that and Colin's suggestion, I think, look at this list and. Maybe start to think, what ones, if you were a next door neighbor, would you want to go to planning board, and what ones would, if they were just for using an existing building? Maybe you wouldn't care so much, there's just a change in occupancy.
Maybe parking lots, if that's not too hard to do. Would be good to add.
If they have.
To your, if you're gonna, yeah, existing parking lot.
Oh, if.
If any of the Hamlet Center buildings have existing.
If there's any existing parking lots, sure, sure.
And are we looking at this only in the Hamlet or? Well, this is, this is just the beginning.
This is just the, we're just talking about the Hamlet Center, which is this. This is the darker, it's like red. Um before we talk about the Hamlet neighborhood, which is that tan color.
Okay.
Yeah.
But no other, nothing outside of those zones could have been proposed other than looking at clustering. In the in the subcommittee.
So we haven't like talked about potential uses, since it sounds like they're considering selling the school.
Are they?
It was in the paper that it was one of the things that they were considering.
Yeah.
That that one of the things for the. For Ithaca School District is uh is perhaps selling that school because it isn't being used as a school and.
And they need money.
And they need money. Oh, I didn't realize other people that it was in. Something I read. Probably after the school board elections and stuff, and they were talking about the need, the need for money. There were a number of things that were suggested is what they could maybe sell or do that they could get money.
Right now, they're just paying for it.
They're paying for storage that according to a couple of people I know work for the school district is just junk.
Well, I've heard too, like you start to get some broken windows and other stuff, so it's.
Hasn't been cared for.
Doing a great job of storing stuff, so.
But that's a pretty decent sized property.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that's there, yeah, we'd have to have an investor for that, yeah.
I think probably, I think the most, so the rest of it is kind of replicated from the first one, so I think we'll go back. Then go back the committee, I mean, you could probably still peek at.
Or do you want the the planning board to look at it again? I mean, right, right now, there's just like an idea of, there there's a good suggestion of. Matching whatever the planning board are doing in the Hamlet to the design guidelines, removing the the planner from the design guideline. Uh for formal process.
Yeah, and then looking at that sort of.
But.
Yeah, so maybe we should look at it, take you back to the subcommittee, look at. How we gets hold the planner responsibilities out of the guideline and then put it. Bring it back here next month and then send it to the town board.
Unless the planning board doesn't want to see it again, and that way it goes to the committee and then to the town board, but it seems like people are fairly. It's a question of the board, I guess, do you want it?
Oh, interested enough to see it again.
I'm looking at it.
The three of us are on the committee.
I mean, I I'm fine with you all taking it from here if you don't want to waste the time to come back.
Yeah, I think I'm also not going to look at.
I would say, I don't think it's a waste of time, es- especially since the planning board is the one that this is their, this is their document, not the town board's doc, I mean, the town board. Approves it, but they don't use it, planning board uses it.
So you just have to formally approve it.
Yeah, so I I agree. I mean.
I think, yeah, it it was helpful to have your, like, your um. Landscaping advice, I think if people look it over and like have like shared thoughts and suggestions and if we don't leave you here, like. It's it's like, it's it's hard to get through, that's the only thing about getting to the meeting, like, it is really like, we can get into the weeds with each one and it is. Like, it's hard to tack on at the end of every meeting, I think.
Right.
And what are we asking the town board to do?
Well, the.
To approve our changes, they'll have to approve it eventually, yeah.
Yeah, it has to go through. About what water review, public hearing, notice, all that stuff, and then the town board would, the town board might change something outright.
So there's a point at which it would come back to us anyway, potentially, will be what we'd be using.
You'd be using it.
But not, yeah, but not formally through the approval process, it could just go right from the committee to the town board. This is more of a courtesy review because this is the planning board's document.
Yeah, I think either way, it should be distributed to the planning board before it goes to the town board.
Good.
Or another. Yeah, that's kind of what I feel like, I'd like to digest it a little more before we.
So let's not forget to the town board yet.
Right, yeah.
And we can see if there's any follow up comments. At the next meeting and then take it after that, plus you won't be here, so.
Right, and my my absence is gonna say, it might probably delay a little bit of this. Luckily, you know, there there is not development, there's not people knocking on my door asking to go, you know. Nobody can do that, they're, you know, doing some proposal here in the Hamlet, but not. There's no rush on this, but it'd be nice to do this year, so just to really consider these things. All right.
All right, uh any other planner report information?
Um the biggest thing just is that, so John is here just part time to help cover um along the way, but also. Really, the the town, he called out a lot of hours for John's availability, so. It's it's really just, it's just great, you know, thank you, John, for for being here, because he's just another uh very decent planner and. Background as a county administration too, and he has, he had a lot of experience for those who haven't met John, so. Already in the week that he's been here, our client and I, we just kind of discussed lots of things, so. There's a lot of big projects, you know, the town is working on, there's there's that Hamlet sewer project that is. Slowly but surely making its way, we had a kickoff meeting with the engineer this Thursday. That's a kickoff meeting to discuss grant administration and also the creation of sewer districts, so there'll be a lot more. Media around this coming up, I think, as we go into the fall about community meetings and how that how that project gets gets structured. And that's really all I can say at this point, I think, um but but then some of these these changes here that we're hopefully gonna gonna work or through.
All right, then I will adjourn our meeting, thank you, everyone.
John, have you been here, you were here a couple of times.
Yes.
When we went out.
Yep.
Since I.